Mr. Baker, I think we left off with you.
Yes, sir. The first item is a public hearing. Notice was given in compliance with Chapter 22 of the Wycomico County Code and the Local Government Article, Section 10-312, that the county council would here, would hold a public hearing to receive comments on a proposal to consider a concession agreement between Wycomico County, Maryland and Seventh Inning Stretch LP, in which Seventh Inning Stretch LP proposes to lease the Arthur W. Produce Stadium with the pertinences for Class A professional football games, ah, professional baseball games. Got everybody's interest on.
Breaking news.
The agreement is for 22 years and six months, beginning July 1st and ending December 31st, 2037, and the financial considerations are detailed in the agreement. This is on Resolution 92, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. At this time, we'll open up the floor to any public comments in reference to the Resolution 92, 2015. If you'd like to, go to the podium over here, state your name, and that you're a county resident, if so be.
All right, we have one.
I'm a resident of Wycomico County. Address is 28822 Atkins Road, Delmar, Maryland. Of course, most of you guys know who I am. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Shorebird Stadium, which this resolution is part of, and being a county resident for 54 years and the impact they've had over the last 20 years, I feel it's really necessary for us to continue our partnership with them into the next couple of decades. Now, as far as my professional part, I've also worked for the Pepsi Cola Biling Ventures here in Salisbury. Been with them for 37 years, and we've been a partner with the Shorebirds for over 20 years, which I've been a good partner with Chris and these guys for quite a long time. The economic impact and the partnerships that we share with these folks have been a really good partnership for the last 20 years, and we're really excited about our next partnership and continuing our partnership for the next 20 years. And we do support them, and we really appreciate them being here, and we wish that the county would consider extending their lease with that. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Gosley.
Thank you.
Hello there. I'm Kathleen Mo May. I am a resident of Wycomico County, and I am here in support of the Shorebirds in extending your consideration of extending the partnership with them, wearing a number of different hats. Number one is the executive director of the United Way of the Lower Eastern Shore, as a resident who knows that 20 years ago, when my son was one of the first six-year-olds as part of the Junior Shorebird Club, and how important that was in our lives, as well as a Rotarian, a past president of the Wycomico Rotary Club. The impact of the Shorebirds is tremendous in our community, and it's far beyond the economic impact. They are a part of the fabric of the caring community we live in. Chris Bitters has served on the United Way Board for many years. Another one of their executives, Jimmy Sweet, has served for years and years as a board member to Big Brothers, Big Sisters. You don't go to one community event where you don't see our Sherman, the Shorebird, creating smiles in our community. It is priceless what they do to bring this community together, and you think, just a baseball team. No, it is much more. On an economic level, just through their employee campaign with our United Way, they're hosting the annual hot stove banquet, which their auction, small little auction, benefits us. Just since 2002, those numbers have surpassed $12,000. That has helped our little United Way provide meals on wheels, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, assistance for fire victims, and the list goes on. It is a big deal, and it adds up, and we're just one community group of many hundreds of nonprofits in this community that benefit from ticket sales, where the organizations get part of the proceeds. Additionally, their in-kind support, if, I think as a community, we could add all of it up, is tremendous with what they've done for us with having our coordinator trainings there at the stadium, as well as what they've done for the many organizations with tickets and providing tickets for children who are less advantaged to be able to go and see their own home team, baseball team, not football team. Our hometown stadium in generous, sorry about that. They have always, you know, they also, this last year made it possible for Cadista, a company in our community who's having a significant impact, to host the Eastern Shore Cournement to benefit our local United Way. Cadista wanted to do that for us. Last year, in its first year, thanks to the support of Chris and their incredible staff, that one-time event brought over 100 people to the stadium and benefited our United Way netting $9,000, and they're planning that to be 150 people this year and netting $15,000. Those behind-the-scenes events are really significant for our nonprofit community, so I think those are beyond the bottom line. I hope that you will consider your strong support of our hometown team that is far beyond the ticket sales and what they do for many of the less fortunate in our community. So, thank you in your decision-making.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir. How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Johnson. I am a Wycomico County resident, and I'd just like to share my experience with the Shorebirds in five very short, different capacities. First, my employer, Salisbury Automotive Napa, we have employee socials there at the stadium. We've got about 150 employees in our Maryland and Delaware stores, and the Shorebird Games are a great way for our employees to get together. Secondly, I was fortunate to serve at West Salisbury Little League for several years. Each year, the Shorebirds invited our league to the pre-game festivities, and the kids were allowed to go on the field in their Little League uniform and paraded around the field. Additionally, the players got to go on the field during the National Anthem and stand by the Shorebird players. This was always a big treat for the kids. Thirdly, in my current capacity with Big League Baseball, which is the oldest division of Little League for high school-age players, the Shorebirds are giving the local players the opportunity to actually play a full game on a major league field. For the majority of the local players, and this year there will be about 120 of them, this is probably their only chance to actually play a game on a major league field, and this is a real treat for them and their parents, too. Also, the Shorebirds offer an opportunity to the local organizations to work in their concession stands during the games, using this as a fundraising tool for kids and adult youth, kids' youth groups. I've done this many times myself, and yes, it gets hectic working in the concession stands, and it's not easy, but it sure beats selling pizza door-to-door. And finally, in my capacity as a father, and along with my wife, we enjoy going out to the games with our kids and our friends and spending an evening watching baseball. Our kids love it, and it's been part of our lives as they have grown up. I hope the county continues to support the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mike Delano, a Wycomico County resident and chairman of the Tourism Committee, and thank you for the time to present just a little bit of what tourism means to the county. I think that it's the one economic engine that we have that is chugging along pretty good right now. If you look at what Steve Miller in the Tourism Office has been able to do with the hotel years, it really is encouraging. And the only reason it's worked as well as it has is because of the partnerships we have, and its partnership with the hotels and motels, its partnership with the restaurants, and the partnership with the attractions, whether it be the stores or retail or something like the Shorebirds. And the Shorebird Stadium has been a valuable asset to Steve and the staff as they work to bring events to Wycomico County. It's a gem that most areas don't have, and we've been able to bring some tournaments to town with the expectation of them playing their games on the field at Shorebird Stadium. And for a lot of them, it's just a dream come true to be able to play on that class of place, but I could tell you how they work with us with Bike Week, they work with the World Series events with USSA and with various events, but Seventh Inning Stretch and tourism have been able to form an extremely valuable partnership, and one that combined to bring in over the last several years, probably in the neighborhood of $85 million in economic impact to the county, and that goes a long ways towards helping pay the bills for the everyday attractions and restaurants in town. Additionally, the Seventh Inning Stretch and Shorebird Stadium is helping us to work to try to bring more tournaments to the stadium that we can use, trying to get in more into competitive baseball and those type things. And I could go in talking about what an asset it is, but you know that. You've been there, you've seen it, you've seen the people, and you know what they do. So I will just ask real simply on the part of tourism that you vote in favor of renewing the lease with Seventh Inning Stretch. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Michael, we also appreciate the work you do on the Tourism Committee. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Members of the council, I'm Richard Holloway, and I will read briefly a statement. I will not dwell on the subject of those who have testified ahead of me, only to concur with those who want to see our beloved Delmarva Shorebirds remain in our community. Certainly, our children and our children's children have benefited by having good, clean, wholesome entertainment for the last 19 to 20 years. It is gratifying to me to see so many youngsters enjoying themselves and bodes well with our educational system. Let's not forget projects such as books, Hit the Books, field trips to games, baseball camps, and on the more serious side, Breast Cancer, Relay for Life, United Way, and the many other fundraisers in which our birds have participated. It's my hope that the parties involved will work diligently to see that the funding and improvements are taken care of. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember, my name is Gil Dunn. I am just a fan of the Shorebirds. I have been a season ticket holder for 20 years, which means I've probably attended more than 3,000 ballgames at the stadium. I'm also president of Fan Club, and the biggest thing is my wife and I are a host family, and through this means we have met many fine young men. We've had them in our homes for the summers. We still are in contact with their families, some of them and some of the players. We've watched young men come through Salisbury and through Delmarva that have made to the major leagues and have been proud to host two of those players that have made the Orioles. So, I hope that you will support this. I think, you know, being a 20-year season ticket holder, I think it's a great thing for the community, and as many people already say, it's great for the youth, it's a great price to bring a kid on a weeknight, but especially on a Sunday afternoon, what better way to spend the day than watching a baseball game at the stadium? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. I'd like to thank all those that participated very much. And with that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 92, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Yes. You're good, thanks.
I certainly appreciate the importance of the Shorebirds of the community, and I appreciate everyone coming here to testify for that importance, and I don't want anything that I say to be taken wrong here, so I just want to make that clear, that I am concerned with some of the terms in this contract. The Shorebirds certainly have a large impact in our community, but they also have a, the taxpayers of this community have provided significant support for the Shorebirds. I'm concerned that this agreement, as written right now, does not adequately compensate the county for the investment that's been made, and the investment that will be made over the next 22 years. The amount of money that the county has guaranteed is $100,000 in admissions and amusement tax, which is paid largely, the bulk of that's paid by the people who attend the Shorebirds games as part of their tickets. This is the same amount that was in the contract 20 years ago, it's the same amount guaranteed that's going to be in over the next 22 years. It seems to me that when we update agreements, we usually update the dollar amount that the landlord, for lack of a better term, the county is, gets in terms of revenue from the person who's leasing from us, you know, at least update it for inflation. Or, you know, the Crossroads Consulting Study mentioned that once these renovations are made, that in this contract, the $2 million the county is going to spend on that, that we should see $20,000 more a year in terms of this revenue. Then, you know, perhaps that should be part of the contract guaranteed to us, if that's what, you know, we are basing our $2 million taxpayer investment into this stadium, which is used largely for this for-profit company. I'm not saying that this agreement should be defeated. I would make a motion to table the agreement and give the Executive's Office time to see if we can get better financial terms for the county. Again, I'm not saying that this agreement is necessarily a bad agreement, I'm seeing if we can get a better agreement. I have full faith in the Executive's Office. I know that they've been working on this for 18 months, I believe. They've been kind enough to provide me with significant information on this, and I appreciate the work that Wayne's done and Andy Whisk to help me with this information, but I decided to make the motion that we table this and we see if the Executive's Office can do better in terms of what the taxpayers of Wycomico County get in compensation for all that we've given to this team.
Thank you, Councilman Kilmer. There is a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second. I have a comment also.
Yes. Discussion.
Part of the agreement, it states that the Seventh Inning Stretch will contribute $200,000 towards completion of Phase Two improvements as shown above in the chart. Additionally, they will provide portable stadium chairs, concession equipment at an estimated cost of $361,900, which is a total of $561,900. But if you go back up to where it says the total cost of the improvements is $4,250,000, it only says that Seventh Inning Stretch gives $200,000.
If I could, ask the Executive and Director of Administration to help with clarification. Gentlemen, I have to apologize. I have to apologize. Thank you, Vice President Holloway. Now, a motion to table, there is no discussion. I really apologize. There will be discussion after the motion, after we take a vote on the motion to table, but it's my fault. Thank you, Vice President Holloway and Ms. Holland. There's been a motion to table and a second. All those in favor of tabling Resolution 92, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Chair votes no. So, the motion to table has been denied. Councilman Davis, you may continue with your questioning, please.
It's on page three.
So, could you tell us where that is, Ernie, for everybody, so the rest of the council can?
Page three.
Page three, with the charts at the top.
Charts at the top and letter C.
Says Phase Two and Three and letter C.
Yes.
And if you don't mind, because of my interruption, if you could repeat that.
It states that the financial will contribute $200,000 towards the cost of completing Phase Two improvements as shown above. Additionally, will provide portable stadium tables, chairs, concession equipment at an estimated cost of $361,900.
The $361,900 is noted on table on total Phase Two. You see that?
Mm-hmm.
Right. And the franchisor contribution is noted on the next to the last row, where it says $200,000, just above the $4,050,000.
Fifty.
And your question again, I'm sorry.
It totals $561,900.
Right.
But it only, they only given $200,000.
If I may.
Certainly.
The franchisor, with the stadium enhancements that are being performed in Phases One, Two, and Three, there are capital pieces that are fixed assets within the facility that we can use state and county bonded money for, and then there are amenities and other portable items that are needed to complement the enhancements that are being done, and the ownership group is handling the purchase of those. That is the $361,900 estimate, is to get the equipment necessary to operate the stadium with the new enhancements that are part of the $4.25 million.
So, I guess, Ernie, I think your question is, are they contributing both buying items?
Yes.
Are they contributing the $200 and?
Yes.
Yes. $361,900 is a separate investment, Ernie. The $200,000 is a contribution towards the improvements to the stadium itself. So, they're two separate, two separate investments.
Okay. So, they will be paying for the $361,900?
Yes. That is correct. It's 100% fair investment.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Because of my reservations, I don't believe I can support this, unfortunately, but I do appreciate, again, the Executive's Office, even though I think you knew I had reservations and may not support this. You were very forthcoming and answered all my questions. You didn't stonewall or anything to attempt to stymie my action, so I appreciate the spirit of fair play with the Executive's Office over the past couple of days. I've had a lot of questions, and I know Andy's spent a lot of time answering those questions for me, so thank you especially for that, Mr. Culver. I hope you recognize the good work that your people are doing, even when I may disagree with you, so.
And Councilman Kilmer had excellent questions, and we like those questions. We'd like to be able to field those questions because we feel they're important as well. I thought everything that you brought to the table was very relevant.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 92, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All those opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Resolution 92, 2015 passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comments in general. Again, go to the podium, state your name, please.
Good evening, county council members. My name is Lauren Stockhausen, resident of Wycomico County.
I'm Claire Maltheus, also a resident of Wycomico County.
And we are both lucky enough to be educators at West Salisbury Elementary School. So, we want to talk to you tonight, and we want to know if you think it's fair that our faculty and staff of over 40 people have one adult bathroom for women and men with one stall in each.
Is it fair that our nurse does not have adequate space to provide care to our students when they're feeling ill at school?
Is it fair that our building has tile floors with cracks all over them?
Is it fair that we have two special educators, a speech pathologist, an occupational therapist, a medical assistance billing person, and two special education assistants serving students simultaneously in one limited space of a portable?
Is it fair that our students can't run on the gym floor because it's concrete and might hurt themselves?
Is it fair that our pre-k students don't even get the option of having gym because our gym becomes a cafeteria for two hours every day?
Is it fair that our teachers teach in rooms that are too cold in the winter and too hot in the spring or summer? I have lost six days in my classroom because there was no heat, and one of those days, six classrooms didn't have adequate heat, and we all had to be moved into the P.E., or into the gym.
Is it fair that due to the age and the decrepitation of our building, that our rooms leak and reek?
Is it fair that our classrooms do not have enough space or storage for our materials?
Is it fair that we have no room for paraprofessional meetings, faculty meetings, ESOL instruction, OT, speech, and IP meetings, all because there's no meeting room at our school?
And, Mr. Kilmer, we've met in January at the Bar Association's Gala. Would you want your child at our school? I'm sure Ms. Wright would be more than willing and accepting of your family to move from Pemberton Elementary to West Salisbury Elementary School. If you don't think that you would want your child in these kind of conditions with, where these highly qualified educators are sitting in classrooms right now that are between 86 and 90 degrees with humidity, you know, I think it, I think each parent in this county should have the opportunity to have their child at a school that they feel comfortable at.
We ask you to please build the new West Salisbury Elementary School.
Do what is fair for our students and right for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Mr. Hammer?
Good evening, gentlemen. Good to see everybody again. First off, I would like to compliment the two educators that just spoke. I think when we look at West Salisbury, I thank you for putting it back at least online for now, and we hope that is obviously going to continue. As president of WCEA, the Wycomico County Education Association, we totally support anything that helps our students learn, supports our teachers, supports our administrators, and of course, supports the parents and the community in which that school exists. So, we certainly hope, in your wisdom, through the next couple of years, you will continue to support that project and fund it as a capital project to improve that community there. It's greatly needed, and it's long overdue. I'm also here, I'm going to speak a little bit, because I know later in the agenda, I don't think there's public comment on the discussion for the public input sessions regarding the new school board, and of course, the Wycomico County Education Association did take a position on the last bill. We are totally in support of the citizens of Wycomico County selecting what type of school board they would like to have, so I wanted to clear that up first off. We feel that public input is an essential part of that process, that every part of the community should have input into that process, as every part of our community has children in the school system. But I think there are several important issues that are going to need to be addressed in that input process. Questions such as, will the new school board reflect the diversity of our student population, which is quite diverse, and how is that going to happen? Will the new school board be nonpartisan to keep politics out of our schools? What models are available that answer those issues that we mentioned, and how are those going to be proposed? And of course, finally, are we going to give the citizens of Wycomico County a choice on a ballot of which system they like most? Or are we just going to propose one particular system? So, I think in the process, all of those questions are going to need to be resolved. I'm not sure gigantic input sessions will do that. It will definitely get the discussion started, but I'm here to say that the Wycomico County Education Association is once again more than happy to offer any services or resources to the council in aiding that process so that hopefully, this round, we can get it correct, and we can get it in the community eye and let Wycomico County decide what kind of school board they would like to see. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. Any other public comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jean Morris, and I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I'd like to emphasize that. I am, I live on the West Side, very proud of it, and I am a Wycomico County citizen, and so I think all of our concerns should be even about West Salisbury School. The citizens of Wycomico County, we're very interested in that city, in that project. The citizens of Wycomico County, we're very interested in that city, in that project. But this evening, I have a survey that I would like to share with the citizens of this great county. And the survey's called "Air Condition Survey of Maryland Public Schools Construction Program", and I did bring eight copies for the council.
Just your mic for me.
I'd like to share this survey with you. Talk about the counties that are on the Lower Shore, not across the bay, just these counties over on the shore. Carolyn County, Caroline, air condition percentage in 2015 was 100%. In 2013 was 100%. And 2011 was 100%. And 2004 was, if I can get this right, 90%. Cecil County, 2015, 97%, and that's with air condition. That's what it means. 2013, 97%. 2011, 97%. 2004, 97%. Darchester County, 2015, 100%. 100% 2013. 100% 2011. 100% 2004. Kent County, 100% 2015. 100% 2013. 100% 2011. 100% 2004. Queen Anne's County, 100% 2015. 100% 2013. 2011, 100%. 2004, 100%. Somerset County, 100% with air condition. The buildings, 100% 2015. 100% 2013. 100% 2011. 100% 2004. Tarburg County, 100% 2015. 100% 2013. 100% 2011. 2004, 100%. Worcester County, 100% 2015. 100% 2013. 100% 2011. 100% 2004. Wycomico County, 2015, 88%. 2013, 83%. 2011, 79%. And 2004, 63%. You might wonder why, the reason I'm sharing this information, and what answers do I expect to get? First, I don't believe that the citizens of Wycomico County even have this information. What answers do I expect to get, honestly? I don't know where to start. Maybe I can get an answer to what has Wycomico County been focusing on that has our county at the bottom of the survey, especially when we, the citizens of Wycomico County, have been so concerned about the conditions that the students and staff have been subject to at West Salisbury Elementary School. Then when I think about the time factor, this survey only gives us a timeline of 10 to 11 years, give or take some months. This has been before our councils, the county, and the Board of Education for a long time. And to put it mildly, just to give a figure, put ourselves at 30 years, we've been trying to get something done at West Salisbury School. What has been our focus during this time? What problems were we solving for the benefit of our citizens? And what areas were we successful in comparison to our neighboring counties? We, the citizens, you and I, have expressed how much we love our children and want the best for them, and I truly believe we do. But somehow, we just don't seem to be able to get it together. We just don't seem to be able to get it together. After 30 years, and I'm saying 30 years, the school has been built for over 50 years, we are at the bottom of the survey. I had more to say, but I think I'll stop right here, because I think we are going to hear more. I think the citizens of Wycomico County need to listen, and I'm sure they're looking at Something has to be done. We can't do another 10 years. And every time we get close to it, see, I've been on this a long time, when Mr. Fulton was going around to churches and schools talking, and when he saw my little hand and a few others, he knew what we were going to ask. What's going to happen to West Salisbury School? That's how long we have been asking the question. Can't do it anymore. You can't do it anymore. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none. Council comments? Councilman Hall?
I'd like to thank the people that came out tonight very much for the input that they had, and the variety of comments that all contributed to helping us and the public be aware of the decisions that we made. We completed the budget tonight and voted on the budget, and I think it was a very positive budget, and we're looking forward to working within it. And it certainly is to the benefit of the taxpayers this year. As far as the Board of Education budget goes, the county gives as much of its funds as it possibly can to the Board of Education. Public has to be aware that only 20% of the budget comes from Wycomico County. The rest comes from the state and the federal government. Although the county makes the decisions on bonding, it does not make the decisions on constructions, on replacement of items, on other items that affect the Board of Education. This council is very dedicated to the Board of Education and to education in Wycomico County, and we would like to see it move forward at a faster rate, and hopefully it can in the future. We're seeing better communication with the Board of Education, and hopefully this will continue. We were very blessed this year that we had an extra $11 million that came in after the budget was presented from the Board of Education. That was added to their proposal. This is an extra $11 million. Now, it reflected some, but apparently it did not reflect enough to make everybody happy. So hopefully this will continue, and we can expect more from the state next year, and things will get better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Hall. Councilman Kilmer?
Well, it feels a little bit like I'm getting whacked around from council, from the audience. Phew, yeah, it's a little rough here. But I do appreciate the comments, and I remember. So I just, I do want to, I guess, clarify a few issues. On West Salisbury, you know, our first day in office, our first evening, you know, we dealt with that issue. With the new county executive, we were all committed to being fiscally conservative, and that's something I certainly share. I mean, I attempted tonight to cut the budget, it didn't work out so well. Tried to get more money out of the Shorebirds, it didn't work so well. And I believe in being fiscally conservative across the board. And so, you know, that, the caution on West Salisbury was a reflection of that. I've read the feasibility studies, you know, we toured the facility, you know, we have had discussions with the executive and the Board of Education about this. You know, I am generally, you know, something certainly needs to be done there. I, you know, from the feasibility study that I've read from the Board of Education, it does seem cost-effective to build a new facility there. I'm not sure what the executive, what the Board of Education, the executive will decide exactly on that. However, you know, renovations, I understand, you know, if you wanted the immediate problems fixed, that could be done a lot quicker than a whole new building could be built. I mean, so there, you know, it's not satisfying for anyone to say it's going to take time to address these problems, but as from what I understand, a new school takes a considerably more amount of time, four years, I'm seeing from the audience, than addressing these immediate problems. So that's part of what we're dealing with now. There are immediate issues, and we understand that. I sympathize with you, and I don't, I don't think any of us here take the issues of West Salisbury lightly. And we are reminded at every meeting about that, and we thank you for that. So, but yeah, so we have not forgotten about that. I think our, you know, the minutes of our meetings reflect that this is something that we discuss fairly regularly. The executive has been, you know, keeping us informed, and we have full faith that there's, that this county will come to a solution to the problem that will be both fiscally responsible and meet the needs of the students and the staff. So, but, so that, I think I'll be quiet now, and hopefully the rest of the meeting will go without any roughness on me, so.
Thank you, Councilman Kilmer. Councilman Davis?
Tomorrow evening at 5:30 at 113 Baptist Street, Delegate Sheree Samper Hughes will be having an open house at her new office, and she said the public is invited. Following that open house at 6 o'clock at the Chipman Cultural Center, we'll be having a district meeting for the citizens of the West Side. Myself along with Councilman Cannon will be attending, and you all are cordially invited.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments? Under presidential comments, I'd like to thank the executive and his staff for putting the budget together as well as they did this year. I thought it was an excellent budget. It was flat, and when I say flat, it was flat. Outside of a few departments, there were a lot of sacrifices made. I also like to thank the staff of Wycomico County employees as a whole for their sacrifices. You can literally see a budget where if you go from last year to this year on salaries, it's flat. That's a sacrifice. Outside of maybe just a few departments, we're actually, due to the demands, that it was imperative that we make some changes, everything, I think, was done very fiscally responsible. The other thing is, we didn't see a tax increase, and that's important to me. I think that's important to everybody in the community as well. It allows us to have more ability to spend, it gives us more spending power as individuals and as families, and we know how tight things still are, as we're still working our way out of the recession. In regard to West Salisbury, I think that we are moving forward with West Salisbury. You know, the council has had discussions with the executive, and the executive is pursuing discussions with the Board of Education. And I think we're very close, if not at the point where a decision will be made to put this in, back into the hands of the Board of Education and let them make the decisions that are necessary to move this project forward. I think we'll all be glad at that. The only other thing is, I'd like to thank Councilman Kilmer tonight for his input. And this is what I like about this council, is that we're very positive in everything that occurs at this table, no matter what the differences might be. I talked to Councilman Kilmer before the meeting. I said, you know, Mark, I'm not sure. He goes, that's okay, John. I'd still like to bring this up. And he sticks by his principles, and I have a lot of respect for that, you know. So often, especially in the political arena, everyone wants to be politically correct, and Mark has principles and stood by that, and I commend him for what he did tonight. Outside of that, went to a celebration, Mr. Gosnell spoke earlier, and Gosley, I'm sorry. And Mr. Gosley spoke earlier about, he's with Pepsi-Cola Bottling Ventures. They celebrated their 100-year anniversary. We appreciate the fact that we congratulate them for their 100 years in Wycomico County, not only Pepsi-Cola Bottling Ventures, but the Hazel family as well that contributed so much to this community. Yes, thank you. And the last thing is Sheriff Lewis. Sheriff Lewis is going to be on Hannity tonight. If you're watching this recorded, you might have missed it, but for June 2nd at 10 o'clock tonight, he will be representing Wycomico County once more on a national platform. We wish him the best. And that being said, I'd like to, yes, excuse me, yes, Bob. Certainly, if you, you'll do, certainly.
I'm sorry, I missed that cue real quick earlier on that last one. I would like to make a mention tonight, we've talked about the Board of Education. I am proud to announce, we've got a notice from the Governor's Office yesterday on the new appointments for the Wycomico County Board of Education. They will be, Mr. Don Fitzgerald will be reappointed again. There'll be Mr. John Palmer will be appointed, and also Mr. Joe Ellinger. So those are, we have a full, complete Board of Education now, so I want to thank those, and I believe Mr. Palmer's in the audience now, but thank the Governor's Office for due diligence on that and getting us forward. Also, I would like to thank the entire staff in the city and the county government office building today. We were privileged enough to be able to stand out on Route 50 in the rain somewhat, but to tour the wounded warriors going by towards Ocean City today. And it was very emotional, very, very touching, and I want to thank everybody that left the building and went down. Besides, we had a fire drill today, too, so we, you know, it's been one heck of a day.
Getting done?
Excuse me? But thank you for, and I'm sorry I missed a cue on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Culver. That being said, entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go to open work sessions.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned.